This meeting is being recorded.
Good afternoon, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for September twentieth twenty twenty two. Like to call the meeting together to to order at five twenty three. We have a reception of delegates, Don ends is going to give us the fire report and I'd like to ask him to proceed.
Thank you very much and once again, good evening.
Sorry.
Our point presentation that we prepared for this presentation, we can get the line. And that is so that'll pop up to the screen. One mark right here.
Yeah, we can see your screen.
Yeah. For that, okay, all right. Okay, we'll go the next slide please. I think we went by to go back. No, that's it there. Anyways, once again, good evening, this is a report that was I was commissioned to do, I was approached. With by the R M of St Andrews seeking my expertise in terms of fire service provision. Just a little bit of my background, I am recognized by the Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs as a fire fire service expert and subject matter expert. And I also teach a fire service programs, management programs, financial programs. I aim specifically at the fire fire service and that's with the University of Dalhousie. And I'm on the faculty of Dalhousie University at this present time. That said, I was asked to take a look at a little bit closer look at the not only. The operations but also the financials of of the fire department. And part of the scope included review of the actual fire service provision paradigm. We took a look at the or not we and let's let's go with I took a look at the at the St Andrews Fire Department organizational structure. I also spent time visiting all halls, all three of the stations and spent time with the chiefs, the deputy chiefs. And many of the officers and the firefighters, we examined the fire stations and took a look at their noted their conditions. Took a look at all the fire apparatus and we've made listings of all that and then we documented all of the equipment that's assigned to each of these stations. Moving forward, in terms of the scope, we also took a look at the data analytics for the financials and what I did is I took a look at the. Operating and capital budgets for the last six years from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty two inclusive. We also took a look at past purchasing practices and what's in play right now. And then we also took a look at the safe worksite practices as they are applicable now and applicable to the fire service. And then finally, I we together a list and when I say we, it was a Daryl that sort of sorry DJ that helped me with this and get this all set up. We we took a look at five communities that are relatively similar in in terms of a composition to the to the R M of St Andrews. Unfortunately, a few of them were only a few were actually quite cooperative and provide us with a lot of data. Some provide us with some data and two didn't even bother to respond, so. That said, we were still able to draw a pretty good comparisons from that and and the the data we did get actually proved to be quite useful in terms of the the provision of this report. Next slide please. What I'm going to show you tonight is basically the the draft of the preliminary report recommendation. This is in five separate groupings. The first one would be the service provision. There it is, contracts and that's certainly is a pertinent term and I have the feeling that'd be the one that you're gonna want to spend a little bit of time on. The second one is firefighter hygiene protocols and that's implicable to workplace health and safety regulations and legislation here in the province of Manitoba. The organizational structure of the St Andrews Fire Department, St Andrews Airport Authority and then finally the financials and the master plan that we developed for this for this recommendation grouping. The first one is we spent, I spent quite a bit of time actually tearing apart the the three contracts that were developed for. The R M of St Andrews in terms of providing fire protection services to the village daughter plus also a medical first responder M F R. Services for Denard and then finally M F R services for the town of Winnipeg Beach. And. All of that information was included with within the the. The recommendation that you had there in terms of the specifics. I think if you have any questions on that right now, perhaps not be the best time to do that. I will tell you that I did not have until tonight the information in terms of what Winnipeg Beach was paying in terms of their M F R. Contractual services that the R M of St Andrews is providing, but I can tell you now that. Last year for the year twenty twenty one, just slightly more than ninety four hundred and seventy one dollars was paid out from from the from the. Town of Winnipeg Beach to. To the R M of St Andrews, which which constitutes a revenue stream. So that said, was there any questions on this particular part recommendation one in terms of the service contracts? And basically what I am promoting on this is that I would think it'd be in the best interest of the R M of St Andrews to definitely take a closer look at this. These contracts go back to two thousand and eight, they have not really been adjusted in terms of taking a look in terms of cost of living allowances. And 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 actually changing it from a two thousand and eight dollar sum to a twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two dollar sum. So I I do believe and and the recommendations there was laid out. I think it quite specifically in terms of actually the dollar value that actually could be derived from a closer look at this. So once again, any questions on recommendation one?
Mister Chair, I have a comment slash question.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I I really appreciate your report is very nice and detailed. I guess maybe you might not be the person to question because it looks like when you look at all the contracts, there was. Looks like not not enough payment was provided from the original contract that is agreed upon, it's that. Then accurate depiction of what you're identifying for, let's say. The Denard Fire Services, it looks like we we didn't collect or they didn't pay what they were supposed to pay upfront. Or not upfront, but totally, is that correct?
Well, looking at the contract, the contract said they should be paying twenty percent of what the operational costs are from the town of Matlock. For the Matlock Fire Station, sorry, not the town of Matlock for the Matlock Fire Station. That said, we took a look at that in the and in twenty twenty one, the operational expense was just over two hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Which means if they were to prorate that at twenty percent, they should have been paying more than they they were. They paid only forty one thousand five hundred seventy nine dollars and they should have paid in excess of sixty five thousand dollars. So that I do believe those money left on the table and and. And that's certainly an easy thing to happen, but but I think it's something worthy of consideration because if you took a look at the final. Almost the final paragraph, I did mention that. Had we taken a look at the the increases in cost through the cost of living, inflation, etc. Take a look and convert it back from a two thousand eight dollars to twenty twenty one dollars, I do believe that the absolute basic. Provisional in term provision in terms of the contractual agreement. You'd be looking at at least another thirty four thousand dollars of revenue stream, just just from from these three contracts.
Right, but essentially if we kept it at the two thousand eight. Costs where they're originally identified. It sounds like we still have to collect twenty three thousand four hundred eighty six dollars from the Dunitt our fire services contract. Thirty seven nine and three thousand nine seven hundred ninety seven dollars for the M F R contract. And it doesn't say an amount for the M F R contract to Winnipeg Beach, but I I guess I'll follow that up with the administration on those collection points.
And and the one point further to this is that. In terms of the contractual agreement set between the arm of St Andrews and with the Denard or the village of Denard. Once again, the threshold was a twenty percentile range. If you take a look statistically at what the fire load was for the Matlock Fire Station, you'll see in twenty twenty one, they responded fourteen times. Into the village of Nodder, which represents almost thirty percent of the total workload in terms of fire fire responses for the town of Matlock. I'm sorry, for this the Matlock Station. That said. If the if the R M St Andrews wants to consider renegotiating these contracts. I I think I'd be looking at going away from the twenty percentile range that that's it's set at now and was set in two thousand eight. And move to something a little bit more realistic like a thirty percent range, because that's actually what your total, that's what your costs are for for providing service into the into the village of the water.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any more questions?
Yes, Mayor Joy, I have a question. Thanks, Don, this is excellent report. So I just want to clear up what Counselor Paul just referred to. On. Under recommendation one, the last paragraph, so. St Andrews Fire Department responded to thirty nine times into Denard over five years. And then they had a total of forty seven fire and rescue calls. So. To clarify, so we only had eight calls in R R M, they basically went to Denard.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
Okay, is that page three, I'm sorry.
There's oh, page two, the last paragraph.
Okay, so what we did is we broke up the responses from from the Matlock Station. And the Matlock Station in in. The twenty twenty one would responded to, you know, I'm off the top of my head, but somewhere between a hundred fifty and two hundred calls, so. The what I made, when I make, when I show the percentile. As being if they responded to fourteen fire rescue calls and they had only forty seven. Total calls that were fire rescue, that's not including all the other calls they responded to such as M V Cs that would not have included the M F Rs. That would not have included obstruction fires or wildlands fires or alarms, so. That forty seven just indicates just actual straight fire rescue responses of which. Matlock provided. Just in that particular category and and once again, I apologize, I perhaps should have provided a little bit of a better explanation. What we did is we took a, we took a look at all the responses they provided for twenty twenty one and then we broke them down into subcategories. And that's why that forty seven. Is is just one subcategory of the entire total for twenty twenty one and I'm hoping that's a little bit of a better explanation for you.
Oh, yes, it is, thank you, because I I the way I read it interpreted it, we only had eight calls in the R M.
No.
That's what I got, I thought, no, that's not right. But anyway, thank you, that explains it, thank you.
Thanks for the question. And if you don't mind, I just want to continue on just a little bit more with that, in terms of the M F Rs, the the medical first response. If you take a look at at Denard, for example, and they paid out fifty eight hundred and fifty seven dollars. And they, we had thirty thirty five calls, the Matlock Station had thirty five responses into the daughter. The daughter's paying a hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirty four cents per call. Your your costs are much higher than that, so the daughter's getting virtually a free service or partially free service from from the R M of St Andrews, so.
Any further comments, if not, we'll get Don to move on. I'm not hearing any, Don, so you want to move on?
Absolutely, recommendation two, what what this is hygiene, air conditioner hygiene and protecting your employees. And the firefighters within the the three stations. This is all information that was put out by a study that was conducted by the National Institute of Occupational Health and Safety and the National Cancer Institute and the University of California Davis. Once again, now this was spread out over sixty years and with over thirty thousand firefighters, they find out the firefighters have a nine percent higher cancer rate. Firefighters have fourteen percent higher cancer fatality rate, the average Canadian will has a chance of a of of contracting cancer forty four percent over the course of their lifetime. Whereas firefighters is fifty three, but the absolute biggest thing and one of the absolute few fewest. While saddest, I guess, does designation is that firefighters are classified as a class one cancer risk, which makes firefighting. The absolute most dangerous occupation in the world in terms of a contracting occupational cancer. That said, what we did is. Report at some time taking a look at what was provided to the firefighters in terms of prevent protecting them, over the next slide if you don't mind. No, no problems, so. There it is there. What what what's happening in the fire service now, not only throughout Canada, but also certainly throughout North America and the world, is that. Hygiene has certainly taken a front and center stats in terms of protecting firefighters and keeping the opportunity for for cancer to spread. Into into the firefighters' lives by simply adopting much better hygiene solutions. That said. Right now, some of the stations already do have a a commercial washer. But what this recommendation is is looking at is is the the installation of. Three commercial washers, one for each station for turnout gear and once again, while I do recognize that a few of the stations do have them. In a few cases, their their washing machines are getting a little bit older. And the other thing too is that each of these stations has twenty to twenty five firefighters, if you have a structured fire that say fifteen or twenty firefighters go to. Just them trying to wash all their gear with only one machine, i- it's not viable, it's sort of like that family of eight trying to do everything and doing laundry day only one day a week, it just doesn't work. So that's why we were looking at at adding one commercial washer plus what the installation of heavy duty washer and dryer setup. That'd be for the clothing that's underneath the turnout gear, the firefighter protective gear. And what's happening now is that most fire departments after every single structured fire they go to, vehicle fire and they go to. Even wildlands fire, the crews are coming back, they're washing their gear for any of the gear that was exposed to the hot zone, which is the the danger zone, the area where the smoke is. And they're washing not only their their turnout gear, but they're also washing their their clothing they're wearing underneath. And they're showering so that they're not taking this stuff home and the idea is to protect the families of the firefighters. So what I suggested is that we take a look at adding two more showers for each each station. And I I did, we did take a look at a quotation that a that originated out of the Matlock Hall. Kind of kind of surprised with the with the amounts. I spent a little bit of time talking to some some contractors in terms of what it could cost to perhaps do this. And I think the absolute best thing in the world is make this a team building exercise where you solicit the help of the firefighters. Because there's always a couple guys on 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 every fire crew that have the capability of of helping install showers and making this work and then the guys. And the firefighters, not just the guys, but the the firefighters all take pride in what's happening with this, they take ownership of this. And it consequently becomes a good team building exercise, so that's what recommendation two is about and once again, if we have any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to stop for that.
Any questions, anybody?
I've got a comment, Chair Prine.
I'm not hearing any, so you want to continue on, please?
I'll ask the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've got a just a comment, you know, I really like the fact that you've identified this because I know there's other industries that also have. That that their employees are engaged with activities that I guess, I don't want to say provide carcinogenic materials, but provide different. Chemicals or things that get stained onto the clothes and not taking those home to family washers and dryers, I think it's a very good idea, so thank you very much, that's a very good suggestion.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate that. Moving on if it's okay.
Yes, please do.
Recommendation number three. So so once again, we took a look at all the call volume and what is actually the actual workload of the St Andrews Fire Department. St Andrews Fire Department responded to just over twenty seven hundred calls between in the five year period between two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty one. The vast majority of which, and it's I believe is about fifty eight percent, were M F R responses. Motor vehicle collisions, you guys are on major highways, you have huge provincial arteries and and traffic. Traffic routes. Going through the entire R M, so consequently, the fact that you have three hundred forty six motor motor vehicle collisions is actually not a surprise. Wildlands fires, once again, a hundred eighty of them, they responded to over the course of the five years, hundred thirty structured fires, surprised by that number, that's that's a that's a high number. So the the fact that that's that's there shows that these guys are actually doing a lot of work, fifty nine water and ice rescue responses. And just so you know, when I sort of looked at the demographics of the R M. Hi, you can sort of see with with the northern part sort of being classified perhaps a little bit more as more resort area. Most of the water rescue calls actually did originate in the Matlock Station area, so I wasn't too surprised to see that. And fifty two vehicle fires responses, the interesting thing about this is that vehicle fires throughout throughout the years have dropped. But what's happening now with the introduction of electric vehicles, especially Teslas now. They're becoming incredibly more hazardous to fight in terms of a firefighting response, so while this number not may not be as that high. In terms of workload, it does represent, you know, especially as as we progress to to a much more. You know, electric vehicle operated climate, you're going to see a lot of a lot more danger being created to the firefighters in in terms of the responses to these calls. Try the next slide. When I spent, when I spent time visiting all three of the stations and doing the initial appraisal of their operating paradigm. The one thing that absolutely surprised me the most was that the St Andrews Fire Department is not one single entity, it's actually three. Each station is is almost like their own separate entity with Clan de Boy being the Clan de Boy Fire Department, saying sell St Andrews as a self and Matlock being their own. Even their even their apparatus, in some cases even state that and. There's not one manager and and consequently, when I when I looked into the into the purchasing practices. This became quite apparent is that there's not single or sole leadership by which to ensure that, you know, the the absolute. Best economies of scale are being achieved through through a, you know, purchasing practice whereby, you know, you're purchasing in bulk. And by that, for example, some of the firefighter turnout here and the firefighter personal protective equipment. Is different in in one station than the other and I I got a bit, I was very surprised to see that because. Virtually every fire service organization would try to standardize their equipment simply because it keeps their costs down. Plus it also works better for in terms of repairs, works better in terms of of familiarity with the usage of that sort of stuff. So that said, virtually all three of the fire chiefs, whether it be Clan de Boy, South, South St Andrews or Matlock. Almost ran as separate entities and while they did converse on a on a fairly regular basis, lots of times that they didn't necessarily get together in in terms of all of the purchasing decision making processes. And once again. Looking at the other structures when I when I took a look at the R of McDonald, when I took a look at the R of Hanover, when I took a look at most of these departments that have more than one station, they all had. A fire chief as such or or a district chief is is the term that the St Andrews Fire Department likes to use. But they have to have one person at the top sort of to lead and and sort of funnel all activities and 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 guide the three. The three fire chiefs of the each of each of the three fire stations and make sure that the well, the R M of St Andrews is is achieving the absolute best possible outcome in terms of all the purchasing. So consequently, the department is certainly growing in terms of what their workload is, I've showed you the amount of call volumes that they're going to. You have a lot of money in this into this organization, this this organization right now is your your operating budget for twenty twenty two was in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. Having a manager to ensure that the best interest of the entire organization are at heart is is probably one one way to go. I'm recommending a zero point four F T E position being created. And what I did is I I consequently adjusted the organizational structure. To sort of shift a few firefighters, a little bit more to the to the to the workload areas that. That that require more more assistance and by that, St Andrews Hall, for example, responded, I believe, to about fifty five percent of the total call volume. Whereas Clan de Boy and Matlock were sort of even at about, you know, about twenty three, twenty two percent for each. That said, I think St Andrews should, the South St Andrews Hall could perhaps have an additional one or two firefighters. And I sort of dropped one or two for Matlock and one for Clan de Boy, once again, to maintain that threshold of seventy five. Paint on call firefighters all the way across the board, so the entire department would have seventy five. The other thing is, once again, sort of going back to this this hygiene issue that we talked about recommendation two, the fire service is implemented, especially here in Manitoba. Where only fifteen years ago, two fire captains in Winnipeg were killed. While engaged in firefighting operations, the fire safety officer role is one that's certainly become prominent within the fire service. And I'm recommending that while one or two of the halls do actually have a designated fire safety officer, I'm recommending all three have that. And I I make that part of the organizational structure, so this is sort of what I looked at in terms of a sort of a revision to your organizational structure for your entire department. The the one comment I will make in terms of what I would look for if you're asking for my advice on this, if you were to hire a district chief. I one hundred percent believe you want to hire somebody that is knowledgeable in the fire service, somebody that is knowledgeable in incident command structure. And someone that'll that'll. That has enough experience and. And enough and a knowledge to actually to gain the support and 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 the, well, you know, the buy in from the three three existing fire chiefs. Because you have to get those three three fire chiefs on board to work together as as one solid cohesive team. And having the right guy at the top to do that would be certainly an incredibly important decision. I do know that this was a position that existed a couple of years ago and it didn't quite work that well. That may be because what happened was the person that took it was a person that was one of the chiefs of one of the stations. And the other two stations may have felt that perhaps they were overlooked in some of the decision making. Processes because the perhaps the the district chief at the time was thought of having a. Greater emphasis on on protecting his 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 perceived people at at a different station, so that said. Almost going outside outside of the department to fill this position would be probably probably a good way to look at going. While certainly while certainly soliciting. Letters of interest from anybody in the department, but. That said, you'd be looking for a person that have to be quite knowledgeable in firefighting operations, plus also knowledgeable in in budgeting processes. Because you're you're controlling once again a budget of in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. I think that's the only slide I have for that, just go one more. Okay, we'll go back to that one if we can, any questions on recommendation number three?
Counsel?
I have a question.
Questions, go ahead, please.
You had mentioned that. There was a hundred and thirty structured fires and you you mentioned that seemed kind of high. Would you have a recommendation on. Ramping up resident education to do with structure fires or or targeting structure fires considering. When you said that was high, like how high do you feel it is, is it like over normally fifty percent of what you're seeing or twenty five percent or seventy five percent, like what what did you kind of mean by that?
So actually, great question, I think I think it's probably, you know, maybe. You know, I I would have thought I would see about a hundred and five, hundred and ten when I when I was sort of looking at all this, that said. We also got to recognize that the St Andrews Fire Department does provide mutual aid response. And a lot of those structured fires could have been, for example, originating out of a out of West St Paul or even Winnipeg Beach for that matter, so. These would be the the places, Selkirk, I know, had called the St Andrews Fire Department at one point. Many of the other jurisdictions within the surrounding areas could have called and that would have certainly driven the number up, so. That said, that that's probably one of the reasons why I thought that number was a little bit higher than normal. Education is fantastic, the the province is very good at legislating, you know, the smoke detector legislation or laws and stuff for that. Having a strong fire prevention program, the one thing that did impress me with the St Andrews Fire Department is the amount of activities, community activities that they're involved with. Where they're spending time with the children, they're spending time with the residents, they're showing the residents of the of the arm of St Andrews. What services are available to them and. You know, all of those things help. That said, also an aggressive fire prevention program where you include that, you know, your bi law enforcement people, you include your your public works people. If you see a situation that presents a hazard on the road in terms of of a fair hazard, they're making sure that the the fire department is being made aware of that. And that's all a communication thing, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, hi, Don, Mayor Joy, I have a question, just for interest, why are electric cars more dangerous?
It's the batteries and uh uh the uh uh they fall like water. And uh, that's how we fight fire and uh um uh they're heavy, they're they're cumbersome, they uh 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 they're they're dangerous, so uh uh that's probably the reason. So uh, we we instruct our our firefighters, I instruct our firefighters to to uh attack from well back and uh try to knock down as much of the flame as possible before advancing on electric car fire. Whereas with most other vehicle fires, you can you can approach dead on and generally not have too many issues.
Oh, thank you, that's very interesting.
Great question, excellent question, thank you. Further that, not hearing any more questions, we'll move on to four. We uh in the fire service, we try to use a a a risk uh risk frequency paradigm, it's a matrix uh whereby we 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 take a look and categorize uh all sorts of uh opportunities or or issues in terms of uh how high of a risk and how high of a frequency do you see? And then I categorize it in terms of or quantify it in terms of how dangerous this actual situation is. When I spend time uh examining the uh the the R of St. Andrews, uh, I and I do live in close proximity to the R of St. Andrews, so I do spend lots of time in in this area. I I would have to say as as a fire service subject matter expert that the St. Andrews Airport Authority Airport actually uh would would have to present your absolute highest risk in terms of what what we see in terms of the municipality. Uh, y- you right now have Canada's eleventh busiest airport. Now Craig's gonna take me to task on that, I spent some time meeting with Craig, uh, he claims it's ten, but unfortunately I can't find anybody to substantiate that. There's uh no fire service provision contract in place. It it is, I I recognize uh an actual uh special operating agency uh within the R of St. Andrews. Uh, that said, uh uh, within being that busiest, that busy of an airport uh with, and I believe it had the figures of a hundred thirty two thousand, uh, no, sorry, one hundred fifteen thousand aircraft movements. Uh, the risk is incredibly high and uh uh. W- one of the comments that came back to me, I was sort of surprised to hear this, is that uh uh the St. Andrews Airport tends to believe that they they have a four minute response time into the airport. And uh I I was incredibly surprised to hear that and and uh. So what I did is I I did a lot more research into it, I spent some time talking to uh uh not only the Clan de Boy Hall, but also to the South St. Andrews Hall. Uh, South St. Andrews Hall being the primary responder into the airport. And uh, the best we we believe we come up with is be about a fifteen minute response time at best to you, that you would see uh uh water flowing. Lot of fire, so uh uh with uh with eleven bulk storage areas, or sorry, with eleven uh fuel storage areas cells within the thing. Plus, a high high amount of residential uh uh occupancy there. Uh, my recommendation, we'll go to the next page, is uh. There it is. Was that on that? I guess I only had one, I only have, there it is, okay. Uh, anyways, I talked a little about the long response time, uh, there is no onsite firefighting equipment, there is no onsite firefighting water supply. Uh, the amount of hazardous materials that are on site with all the commercial development that's taken place within the general region uh makes this uh incredibly dangerous place to respond to. That said, I'm suggesting and recommending that uh the R of St. Andrews take a look at uh putting in a uh uh you know, a a truck design for actual airport airport firefighting capability and uh uh, that's consequently where that recommendation originated from. The one the one thing that that did sort of scare me looking at this, I know in twenty twenty three, uh, there's gonna be a development of a bulk fuel facility. Uh, and uh uh, there's just, there's just lots of dangerous things. So once again, on that risk risk frequency matrix, uh, while the risk is incredibly high, the frequency is not so much. And consequently, that's why I I awarded that, but uh uh since this is, and once again, thank you for Craig for bringing this to my attention, since this was the only airport during the time of COVID that was profitable. Perhaps it's maybe time that the airport authority take a look at uh investing and making a investment in in uh firefighting equipment onsite. Uh, especially with a lot of the uh the South Hall firefighters living in very close proximity to the to the airport. Uh, you can have firefighters on scene, uh, perhaps within four or five minutes. And if they have a uh apparatus there uh or firefighting equipment there that they immediately could take it to play. You might be able to see that long response time drop to maybe eight, ten to twelve minutes, which uh i- in terms of uh uh, you know, how firefighting is is factored in terms of danger element. Uh, time is everything and dropping that response time is there, so. Consequently, I think I beat that horse to death on that, so I think I'll stop on this now, any questions on that?
Just one comment, uh, I have a said, I think that uh the airport is is probably going to be see economic growth over the period of the next few years, so I think having its own firefighting equipment would be prudent.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment to Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, no, I I really appreciated this section and uh, you know, tapping on the fact that the airport is a uh is a is a booming uh spot for uh for industry as well as uh uh for for business sense, um. I I think this it would only make sense for us to be able to move forward and and protect some of that infrastructure that we have or or do the best of our ability and and I appreciate the fact that you're looking at this in minutes, uh, because that's very, very important, because especially if you have fuel storage containers around there and and one of those is to go off, every minute counts very much so, because it can move on to the next hanger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the comments.
I have a I have a comment, John. Go ahead, please. Hi there, Don, Laurie here, Hunt. Um, two things, have you, did you look at any other uh municipal airports of this? Um, that were handed down, you know, in the late nineties to municipalities from the federal government?
So what I do is a- absolutely, the uh of of the twenty nine largest airports in Canada, I I believe seventeen have their own actual firefighting cert firefighting uh departments actually on site. Uh, the 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 one thing uh is while I do claim that St. Andrews Airport is the eleventh busiest in twenty twenty one. That's only in terms of uh of a- aircraft movement. Uh, in terms of passenger flow, uh, you wouldn't even be in the top thirty, so uh uh. So 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 that 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 is uh uh and tha- that's your uh that's your report writer being one hundred percent showing you all the cards, uh, you know, on the deck on this. Uh, uh, that said, uh uh, mo- most uh Winnipeg International, for example, has their own uh firefighting uh department, which is supplemented by Winnipeg Fire. And uh, most of the larger airports in Canada do that, uh, they they put uh the 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 basic firefighting uh uh services onsite and uh and provide equipment onsite, and then it's usually augmented by the 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 municipal uh municipal uh fire service authority within the area.
Right, and the other comment is, um, there's a capital assistant program for airports from the federal government called ACAP, which is Airport Capital uh Financial Assistance Program, uh, Capital Program, which allows us to tap into the federal government for for um equipment for the airport, such being a sweeper, a spill blower, a sanding truck. And to me, that would follow along these categories of these lines, so we should take advantage of that program in the future and apply for a grant for that type of of piece of equipment.
Well, thank you for your comments on that, do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything further on recommendation number four?
Uh, yes, Mayor Joe, I have one question, Don. So in other airports that have like a fire onsite for our related to our airport structure. Is it the airport that would pay for that service, or is it the R of St. Andrews that would pay for that service?
So in Winnipeg, it's the actual airport authority that's responsible for providing preliminary firefighting response uh for uh James James Richardson Airport, so uh. Uh, that said, they have a, you know, and I'm not I'm not privy to the the contractual arrangements they have with the city of Winnipeg on that. But I'm I'm willing to bet there would be a co- a contract in place for that, so. Uh, the the one that's probably most similar, if we're gonna draw a comparison, would be Steinbach's a- airport. And I and I do believe, uh, while I had a tough time getting some of this information, I do believe the Thomas Steinbach provides the the fire service protection for that for that airport.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to know if there was a common route that everybody takes, but, okay, thank you.
In in Winnipeg, in Manitoba here, you you would see uh uh uh, I know the Paw Airport has their own fire service. Uh, I believe Thompson does, uh, Brandon certainly does, I'm not sure about Porsha Prairie, uh, but uh tho- those are once again larger airports, but with a hundred fifteen thousand uh takeoffs and landings, uh, most of which are by students. Uh, I I'm assuming that is a risk and and uh uh the flight paths are over residential areas.
Yes, exactly, thank you, yeah. We hear about it.
Okay, with nothing further, we'll move on to recommendation five.
No, please, move on.
Yeah, we're just switching over, so. Anyways, uh, you can see that this is relatively a meaty section, this is the part where I drew mostly data together and uh and uh put this all on the pages for you to see and follow along with. Uh, you'll see that I documented the uh uh St. Andrews Fire Department budgets for uh twenty uh twenty seventeen to twenty 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 two for the six years inclusive and uh broke it down into operating capital and the total budgets. When comparing budgets with some of the other communities, I I found that St. Andrews was certainly uh uh was certainly well within the without the realm of the other departments. Uh, the one department that that seems to come up as uh uh uh, the the one that perhaps uh uh C A Os and and counselors may look at and wonder why and shake their head is the R McDonald's Department, the the R of McDonald's Fire Department uh covers an area uh, I believe, which is larger than the the R of St. Andrews, uh, plus also has a a residential base, I believe, which is slightly more. That said, uh, the R McDonald's is now in the process of uh building two new fire stations and buying uh at least five or six new fire trucks. So they're right now putting out a capital budget that they figure will exceed eight million dollars in the next two or three years. So uh, while the R McDonald has uh enjoyed the benefits, perhaps financially, of having a uh incredibly cheap uh fire service to to maintain and operate. Uh, that's coming to a very swift end, so. Hanover uh has a full-time fire chief, took a look at their department and in terms of their thing. Uh, our costs are relatively similar, uh, the major difference with with uh, which differentiates St. Andrews Fire Department from most of the other in the in the immediate area is the provision of uh uh medical first response, EMS provision services for the residents of St. Andrews. Uh, once again, it does make up fifty percent, uh, fifty eight percent uh over the first over the last five years of the workload. Uh, and consequently, uh, it it is a service that that does incur some cost to maintain. The good news is is that uh uh uh, when when breaking down the data, uh, it was found that the the cost of uh of a of an M F R call uh translated to about two point two uh uh responders or firefighters per call. Whereas a fire call, uh, I believe the number was ten point one. So so let's assume that your M F R calls are are about, you know, anywhere about seventy five to eighty percent cheaper uh per call than than fire calls are, so uh uh the the M F R calls, uh, while perhaps thought of as being a quite expensive service, actually is not, is not. And when we are generating some revenues from it, uh, and and once again, if there are some uh uh, if if the R of St. Andrews decided to to look further into this, uh, you might be able to generate more revenue for it to to uh to counter the cost of this. In the immediate area, I believe the only uh R M that's offering uh M F R service uh uh close by is East St. Paul. Uh, uh, there's only, I believe, in southern Manitoba, five departments that offer uh uh full uh uh medical first responders uh response from their departments, uh, with St. Andrews being one of them, so uh, there's not a lot of them. Uh, it's uh uh, when we when we did crunch the numbers, we found out it was not costing you uh uh, it it certainly is not divisible uh by uh taking your total call volume and then dividing that into your budget to come to a call a call cost, it's uh, it it's it's a it's a cheaper service to provide per call. But it is a that uh service that takes up fifty eight percent of your workload, so uh uh. That said, I I'm just trying to make sure that uh that was sort of brought into play and and hopefully a a better understanding of that was was put forward uh through this uh report that I developed for you. Uh, capital budgets, uh, we examined those and we also examined the revenues, most of which we've already taken take a look at. And then we took a look at the twenty year purchasing plan. The uh three main facets of assets that uh the uh St. Andrews Fire Department uh actually manages would be broken down into uh into stations and into e- equipment, to rescue equipment, uh, that sort of stuff, uh, personal protective gear. And then finally into your fire apparatus. The good news is, is after uh spending some time examining the three stations. Your your three stations are are in actually in quite good shape, and it looks like they've been well maintained uh, not only by the R by the R M of St. Andrews, but also by the firefighters, which is which is great. And there's no doubt in my mind that uh the firefighters take your great pride in their stations. Uh, I was watching as uh this the South Hall was uh putting together uh uh sort of a serving area, uh, I don't know what to call it, but a kind of a decorative uh thing where they actually took the front of a fire truck. And and they're mounting it to the wall to make it look like uh you you're sort of walking up to uh uh, you know, a serving area. That that's actually from the front windshield of a fire truck, so. Uh, and these are the guys doing this, th- this is uh, first off, I I had to give the chief uh just huge kudos for doing this, because it's definitely a team building exercise, uh, these guys aren't charging to do this, th- they're doing this out of the love of their community and the love of of firefighting. And 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 that's a big thing, so uh uh, that's uh, that was sort of one of the reasons why I reverbered back when you saw that early recommendation on hygiene. That you take a look at the possibility of uh of soliciting the firefighters to to do that, simply because of uh you know, the buy-in and and the ownership they take and the pride they take in their stations, so. So uh, that said, moving on to the third item, uh uh, with stations being good, actually the second item. Uh, in terms of uh personal protective gear and in terms of all of the rescue equipment, uh, which includes all your water rescue equipment, which which are all big ticket items. A set of jaws of life right now is about fifty thousand dollars, you have six of them, these, you you have well over a billion dollars worth of assets in just equipment. That said, most of your uh your assets were in very good shape, and and that means that the firefighters have been taking good care of them. Uh, most of the assets are relatively new, and I'd have to say that uh, in my opinion, most of your assets will not need to be replaced in the foreseeable future, which is great, so I I'm I'm predicting that uh, other than implementing hygiene protocols for the stations, your station should not be costing you a lot more, a lot of money in the in the near future, and your uh fire rescue equipment should not be either. Unfortunately, though, the fire apparatus is is a whole different ballgame, uh, that probably represents uh if it was new, it would represent uh uh assets in value in excess of eight million dollars. That that value certainly is there not now, uh. Y- y- you, right off the top of my head, I I I have to, I have to strongly suggest that you consider purchasing three new engines, one for each hall and one new tanker, uh, and and that'd be done in the next next couple of years, I I know it's it's a it's it's a heck of an expensive expenditure, but uh, two of these engines are nineteen ninety four vintage. And uh, the the third one, I believe, was a two thousand, uh, all of which are are well in excess of N F P A accepted guidelines for fire apparatus in play. So uh, that said, what I did is I developed the twenty year purchasing master plan and uh uh we spent some time looking at uh how to best uh sort of uh take a look at replacing your entire fleet over the next twenty years. Because that's what you'd end up ultimately doing is replacing absolutely everything over the course of twenty years. And uh uh, the 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 one thing that is a constant, and uh one of the suggestions I had made to DJ and Colleen was that we take a look at moving uh your your personal protective equipment, uh, which has a ten year shelf life. Uh, service life and and move it to not from your operating budget, but instead into your capital budget. So consequently, that's why if you look at the twenty year uh purchasing master plan, you'll see that uh on every single year I included twelve sets of uh personal protective firefighting gear. And uh, once again, this represents an asset that I believe I pegged at about three hundred thousand dollars uh, just for for the value, uh, just just for the for the value to your department, so. So that's uh pretty much what I did with all of the data and uh uh, we took a look at uh some of the salaries across uh many of the departments in within close proximity to the R of St. Andrews. Uh, I I found that your salaries that you're paying your firefighters were 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 very reasonable and uh uh, the provision with the three hour call out was was generous and consequently uh uh, while perhaps the hourly rate might be slightly lower, uh, the three hour call out balanced it off, so I was not recommending any increases uh uh to to any of the costs you pay uh in terms of uh, in terms of wages. Uh, wages does represent the absolute biggest part of of your budget, but that's pretty much uh, the same in in any organization. So it certainly was no surprise. Um, I I would think uh, uh, the the one thing I did notice uh, talking to your firefighters was uh, uh, that I'm doing it for the money. And they made, they made that very, very clear to me. And uh, uh, wh- when I see, when I see paramedics, for example, that are responding to uh, uh, M F R calls in Matlock, uh, and they're they're doing this for twenty-two a wait an hour, wh- when they could be working overtime for the province and making seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, that shows me that that's an appreciation of their communities. That's appreciation of the people they work for. And uh, that's appreciation of of everyone. So so that said, uh, I don't believe that part's about the money. Uh, I did uh, peg a figure for uh, for the uh, uh, district chief position, the the senior position for the department at thirty-six thousand, uh, now simply based upon what I was seeing other departments paying. Uh, Hanover's paying their full-time chief, uh, I believe off the top of my head was about ninety-two, five, uh, and McDonald's paying their chief about thirty-two, thirty-three thousand. Uh, East St. Paul is a part-time chief and they pay him uh, I I I was just under twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars a year. So uh, uh, and and he would not be a zero point four. So so that said, that was, that's sort of the justification I had in terms of playing with the salaries and that sort of stuff. Uh, there's lots in that area. If if I have any questions, I'd probably the best to, if you start throwing at me now and perhaps we can go to sort of the areas of concern or interest to you.
Mister Chair, I have a comment.
Please go ahead. I'm, yeah, I'm in and out. It's keep, keeps on uh, keep on getting kicked out. So if you don't hear me, please uh, go ahead and ask questions.
All right, uh, uh, thank you for that, uh, Mister Enz. Um, can you, I'm I'm just gonna make a general summary. I think I heard you say, so is it, is it a true statement that y- you said you had looked at some of the other fire departments around us? Uh, of the fire departments that don't offer M F R services, it sounded like you said we're of similar budgets to them, but we also offer M F R services. Is that an accurate statement?
No, it would not be because uh, uh, your, your, your wages are considerably higher than the other departments that are not offered that. The uh, the actual basic operating costs, whether it be Hanover, whether it be, and and I didn't get the information from St. Clement's. Today actually is when I got a call from their protection manager telling me that, yeah, he's he's been working on it. And and we've been trying, DJ and I, uh, and and now Colleen, we've been trying to get this information now for months and I just couldn't get it. Uh, that said, when we look at your operating budget, uh, on the fireside, it's the same whether it's in Hanover, it's the same whether it's in uh, uh, St. Clement's or Springfield, uh, a- all of which have about the same amount of fire trucks, have the same amount of fire stations and they have the same amount of firefighters. Um, the, the reason why yours is a little bit more inflated is because fifty-eight percent of your workload is the M F R, which adds to your wage call. So I'm sorry, I'm hoping that answers your question and I I I wasn't trying to sidestep that question at all.
No, no, that answers my question. That was good. Um, and you know what? Thank you for confirming that our fire departments are are basically where they should be and the fact that uh, our firefighters are are continuing to keep up uh, the fire halls and equipment in a great condition. You know what? That's a, that's a very good uh, um, point to to be able to see that having an outside person come in and take a look and that we're in very good condition. So thank you and thank you to all those firefighters that are making that happen.
Just, just taking one, that one step further, uh, I was very, very pleased with with the management of the uh, St. Andrews Fire Department. Uh, I didn't meet all three of your uh, of your fire chiefs face-to-face. I met two of them face-to-face. Uh, uh, the the work that they're doing, I was very incredibly impressed with and uh, uh, same with the firefighters. I I mean, the amount of training, uh, the amount of time and effort that they're, they're devoting to this. Uh, I spent time uh, tearing apart the uh, the actual attendance records. I mean, you got a deputy chief in Matlock uh, that's, that's showing up to a hundred percent of the training exercises. I mean, that's astounding. You know, that's fantastic. Uh, in terms of the call volume, uh, I took a look over the last five years and he was averaging like ninety-one, ninety-two percent of uh, responses to all the fire calls. Uh, uh, I mean, wow, don't lose this guy. He he's fantastic, you know, and 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 he wasn't the only one. There's, there's quite a few of that. So that said, uh, I I I was very, very pleased and and very, very impressed with what I saw in terms of of the the management and and the caliber of firefighters you have.
Thank you for that.
Any further questions? Not hearing any. So if you want to continue on.
Yeah, I think we can move past that. And uh, uh, once again, these are your operating budgets. I categorized them uh, by dividing them into six separate categories. Uh, would be wages, fire equipment, communications. Uh, if you take a look at twenty twenty-three, you have to come up for that slide. Okay, uh, this was the recommendation I made for your, your chief, which we sort of covered. Um, a couple of the other stuff was just, just a little bit of housekeeping stuff and uh, uh, when I, when I tracked the hours that were put in, I I noticed that the uh, uh, the fire chiefs were, were putting them in increments of one hour. Uh, I I would think tracking it in terms of one-tenth an hour would probably be a little bit. I- it's not going to save a lot of money, but it, but uh, excuse me, yeah, it sort of puts forward the notion that uh, hey, uh, this is a little bit more uh, uh, indicative exactly of the, of the service we're providing. And then later on, if you're doing data analytics on this, it gives you a better picture on that. So in terms of the master plan, if you take a look at the left side of the screen, you'll see this is your present uh, uh, fire apparatus inventory. And then once again, uh, I indicated that you had two engines that are nineteen ninety-four vintage. And uh, uh, a- and and sorry, that's a uh, um, the terminology and the verbiage sometimes it gets lost on me. Uh, I I I like referring to uh, to pumpers as engines and uh, I gotta admit, half the time I surprise the guys because I'm not exactly sure what I'm talking about. Uh, a pumper is an engine. So if I use one or two, uh, either those terms are interchangeable. So so uh, that said, uh, uh, I'll I'll try to shift back into my St. Andrews Fire Department mode. And uh, uh, in terms of your pumpers, your four pumpers, uh, a- all of them are are quite dated. So uh, uh, that said, the uh, the the tanker conversion at uh, Matlock, the nineteen ninety-nine conversion, that that's, that's sort of the one that makes me real nervous when you look at it and and uh, uh, I I'm very certain that these guys are making sure these, these, these pieces of equipment are roadworthy. But uh, in terms of liability uh, to the community, I'm willing to bet that uh, if uh, an accident ever occurred and the worst-case scenario of a nineteen ninety-nine conversion tanker hitting a busload of nuns and puppies ever happened, you know, uh, the issue in terms of liability would be, would be catastrophic. So uh, um, I I would very strongly recommend uh, replacing this thing and get this thing out of service as soon as possible. The uh, the bad news is, a- and and I know perhaps you may say I've already given enough bad news on this area. With COVID, we we've all seen supply chain issues. The prices of fire trucks have, like everything else, have gone through the roof. Uh, secondly, what's happened is, is that it seems like most of the fire departments uh, uh, panicked in that. And right now, uh, uh, Winnipeg uh, is host to the uh, Canada's largest fire truck manufacturer. Uh, they are right now are running anywhere from eighteen to twenty months on delivery of new vehicles. So even tomorrow, if you were to order a fire, a new fire truck, you're not getting it to twenty twenty-four. So uh, um, that's sort of the, the bad news of this and that's sort of what's happening. Uh, the U S exchange rate is a killer right now. We all know this. Uh, those of you that are planning your, your winter getaways to Hawaii or Texas or Mexico. It's at seventy-five cents on the dollar, which consequently uh, just means that the the cost of these units is that much more expensive because most of the components are are American-made components. Uh, whether that be the chassis, whether that be the pumps, whether that be the tanks. So uh, and and the equipment for that matter. So so unfortunately, it's sort of a tough spot to be in. Uh, one of the things I was working on and uh, I was gonna spend a little bit more time tonight talking to Colleen about this is uh, 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 I I would consider looking at uh, you know, a ten-year lease where perhaps you maybe take a look uh, uh, at purchasing three engines uh, and a tanker. Uh, do it as one uh, uh, R F P and uh, uh, spread it out over two years. Uh, but uh, uh, lease it over a ten-year period where you put ten percent down of the total cost. And uh, the total cost uh, using, using the master plan, you'll see is about uh, a two point four, two point five million for three engines and and a tanker. Uh, that said, uh, you'd have to put down about two hundred fifty thousand as a deposit, uh, sorry, as a ten percent down, down payment. Uh, your, your monthly lease payments, I'm just waiting on this yet. Uh, I I'm just shocked that leasing companies would not want to jump fast. I've been asking for this for the last three weeks. I can't get them to give me an answer. Uh, you would think anybody looking at a two-point-five million dollar lease would, would be looking to try to do business with us as fast as possible. At least provide us with the information. Uh, that said, at at the, at the end of ten years, uh, after making monthly payments, uh, you'd buy each truck for ten dollars out and uh, um, that, that's one suggestion because uh, I I I'm certain uh, the R M is not going to be uh, too thrilled with the idea of looking at uh, capital budget increases of uh, uh, you know, several million for the next couple of years going forward. So so consequently, that was just one of the suggestions I was working with. Uh, if the council is so inclined, I I definitely will spend more time working on that and I can work up a, a better uh, recommendation on that. Uh, if that's not the appetite of council, that's no problem. I'll, I'll just back off and wait till after the instruction comes forward on that. Any questions on that?
I got a question, John, and a comment. Laurie here, Don. Um, a couple of things. Can, can you send us the um, are you there, Don?
Yes, I am. Sorry.
Okay, um, the um, you said the N F P, like for underwriters and insurance, like the age of these trucks and that and and what they can be, um, like, I know you have good intent with that nineteen ninety-nine international, but that was a conversion originally. It had a milk tank on it, but it now has an acres tank on it, but that truck only has fifteen thousand kilometers on it. That truck was purchased as a brand-new truck for that purpose and 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 has an acres uh, water tank on it. And in that hall, you know, there's uh, lots of mud roads, soft roads. So it's a good asset to have that small, um, that small tanker capability. So but the truck only has fifteen to sixteen thousand kilometers on it from brand-new. And like, and the other truck is safety, you know, um, um, provincial safety on it. So you know, and and like I say, it has an acres, an acres tank on it. But where in the underwriters are like, what are the, what are the qualifications? Like, I know they say twenty-five years for frontline pumpers and um,
Actually, it's fifteen years for frontline pumpers and twenty years for uh, uh, as backup or spares.
Okay, and to how far down?
Tankers are different. Tankers are different. I think, a- and and you know what? Uh, I I'm not going to give you a figure on that because I just don't know it off the top of my head. Okay. And uh, uh, that said, uh, and you know what? And and I stand corrected. First off, I appreciate your comments on that because you you're you're a hundred percent right on that. Uh, that's what did happen with that nineteen ninety-nine conversion tanker. Uh, uh, in terms of that, that it wa- it was well converted, but uh, i- it still is a vehicle that goes back. Uh, if you were to take a look at the mileage, and I did have that, I don't have the inventory here with me uh, on hand. But uh, I have all the mileages of all your vehicles. Uh, so if you think fifteen thousand is low, probably the vast majority, I'm willing to bet your two thousand and five sterling bumper probably only has thirty thousand, thirty or forty thousand.
Yeah.
So mileage is not necessarily a function. Uh, it's, it's usage and uh, a- a- and once again, y- y- your comments were not lost to me on that and and they, they are extremely good comments uh, on that conversion. So so
Yeah, thank you. And like I say, I would be, you know, you talk in your budget about uh, one this year, one next year and one year after. But I agree, do three at the one time. Uh, I think you may get a better price. And also there's still some value in these, in these current pumpers. Uh, so why not get an extra year or two or three of value out of them to into the next life wherever they're going to go, which I know is, is a struggle because who's going to pick them up, you know? But I'm, I'm sure there is fire departments, um, you know, that go to another countries probably that this would be very good equipment for them.
Fantastic comments. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna expand a little bit on that. Uh, what you may not know is that uh, uh, for, for many years, I was the fire apparatus procurement officer for the Winnipeg Fire Department. Uh, I purchased about uh, during my time in that position, I probably purchased over thirty fire units and I probably spent over seventeen or eighteen million dollars worth of uh, a Winnipeg taxpayer money to purchase these equipment because th- this, this, the uh, the, the grim realization about anything with the fire department is that uh, any municipality's most expensive vehicles are generally their fire vehicles. And uh, uh, luckily, you don't have ladder trucks because ladder trucks right now, you'd be looking at anywhere from uh, one point six to two million dollars per truck. So uh, uh, I don't recommend you get one. I don't believe you need one. Uh, I would certainly uh, recommend against it. So uh, that said, uh, that's good news. Uh, but uh, the the one thing that we always looked at doing, and and you will have heard me earlier, I had alluded to the fact that the, the three halls sort of were operating as separate entities. Um, what would need to happen, and that's why I'm sort of recommending a district chief to lead, uh, is that you do actually purchase all three trucks and you get consensus amongst all three halls to make sure that all three trucks are identical. Uh, simply because you will achieve economy of scale in terms of purchasing power. Uh, the bulk power by three at one time is certainly better than one. But every time you change one truck over another, uh, say if Matlock insists on having this where uh, uh, St. Andrews insists on having that, every time you add engineering fees, you increase the value of that truck or the value of the cost, you know, expertly. Uh, just by a huge amount. So uh, excuse me. Uh, that's why uh, that's why I was sort of pushing uh, for a little bit of, of having that district chief position created uh, where you have the consensus, where everything is the same and consequently, those are the economies of scale that you, in terms of savings that you, you'd be able to generate uh, by by doing that, that, that suggestion you had made.
I got a, I got a question or a suggestion here. You know, like we're, we're uh, St. Andrews Airport currently has no uh, firefighting equipment. Um, I would make, maybe make a suggestion that until they de- decide to get new stuff, whatever, whatever we are going to not use anymore, be stationed at the airport, uh, in a case of a fire there, at least they have something which is better than nothing.
Great suggestion.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? I don't hear any. So if you want to
I have one more comment, John.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead, Laurie.
We had talked about this actually at the beginning of our term, even with our public works, e- equipment. And like, Don, this falls into that too. Like, we run in, in, in our public works department, we run four graders, uh, three excavators, a loader. Um, you know, we, we try to turn that equipment over on a five to six to seven-year basis. Um, and and sometimes a year goes by where we don't get enough money or the, you know, it has gone up and we don't re- don't replace it. Uh, an engine goes. Now we're fifty thousand dollars into that used machine. Now we have to keep it for another year or two more or two more years. It was the same suggestion with the equipment of, of every five years. Um, you know, there's been talk about other R M's do that. Even some farmers do it. Uh, you're getting a, a real deal on, on six, seven, eight pieces of equipment. And you lease it or you turn it over every five years and then you know what your capital plan is. You, and you know what your costs are per year. You got no, no expenses because they're on, they're on warranty. And um, when one breaks down, you know, they're going to bring you another one out because of your buying power and that. So I think that's a good program and that's something, a program we should look at on council even for the public works equipment. You know, on, on a five-year plan because that stuff we rotate over because that stuff, your heavy equipment in public works is worth valuable money to, to uh, to a contractor after five years in a, in a municipal because it's only done snow and light grading of roads. It hasn't done construction. So uh, contractors are always waiting in line to buy municipal equipment. It's just a comment that I have, you know, you know, we use the same practice within public works as, as well. So it's a good idea for the fire department as well.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I, I appreciate that. And and the one thing I did uh, uh, mention, or did not mention, but uh, what was brought to my attention is uh, how well the uh, the R M as a whole is working together in terms of, I know your light fleet vehicles uh, have been passed off to the fire department to, to, to uh, to be used as their support vehicles, which is a great idea. Which is a, we, I, I think that's a valuable usage of a, of a, of an R M asset. Uh, if your uh, public works foreman's truck is now six, seven years old, has got eighty or a hundred or two hundred, two hundred thousand kilometers, it's certainly be a support truck for uh, for a clandestine fire or or bad lock fire. That, that's a great idea. So
Any more questions? Well, if you continue on, please, Don.
Okay, we got one hand up for Matthew, wondering if there's
Yeah, just, just to add to uh, Lori's statement there, like uh, the, the, the leasing thing is a good thing if you're turning that equipment and those trucks, you know, every three to five years because most of those plans, uh, being in that business for many years, uh, you've got full warranty and full protection on that. So this, it's not much of a cost to the taxpayer, to the R M, to main to maintain and service and fix and look after these units. And uh, I there there is other RMs like Lori had mentioned about, you know, using uh, graders and and trucks and all of that stuff, using them on short-term leases. Uh, it it's a hundred percent write-off because it's it's basically a rent that you're paying. And you've got full servicing agreements and warranty and all that stuff. So it's definitely something to look at, opposed to kicking out two, three million dollars of money. And then again, every six months or every year, we got to replace this, we got to fix this, we got to service that. It's the constant, you know, dog biting at the bone, eating eating money from the pot, where if you're flipping inventory every two, three years, there's really no cost because of warranty benefits, right? So uh, yeah, all good points.
That said, and and once again, I I can't tell you how much I appreciate your comments, sir. Uh, what I'll do is uh, um, I I'm hoping to have this information coming back from the leasing companies uh, within the next week or so. Uh, the report as a whole will be finished very shortly. Uh, and that'll be going in front of council, the 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 entire report. Uh, what I'll do is I'll include a section in on that report on on, just specifically on this issue. And uh, uh, take a look at, say, the purchase of three uh, three pumpers and one tanker. Take a look at the what the leasing cost would be, and I'll actually break it down dollar-for-dollar for you.
Okay, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. If we're, if there isn't any other further questions, we'll move on to the next session. So what I did is I took a look at what I project to be your operating budget for uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, it it certainly is rounded up. Uh, just so you know, your wages, uh, if this would be uh, uh, this is sort of based upon uh, on the premise that you would be taking a look at uh, filling that district chief position. So your salary, your wages would go from about uh, five-twenty, five-thirty up to about six-hundred thousand, and probably perhaps slightly, excuse me, slightly less, but uh, that's what we looked at doing. Um, in terms of your administrative costs, I I think those would be relatively stable. Your apparatus vehicle costs, though, uh, I increased that, and that's simply because of the cost of fuel. And uh, we, you know, um, the good news is, is that uh, uh, if you if you're only putting fifteen or twenty thousand miles or or kilometers on a lot of these vehicles over their lifetime, uh, you're not using a great deal of fuel, but uh, uh, your view of fuel costs will still drive up your operating costs, no matter how you look at it. And that's sort of uh, that premise is also sort of applicable to your station costs, your cost of heating and all that, to likely be be more expensive. Communication costs, uh, I I will, I would say, remain stable. That's your nine-one-one, your cell phones, uh, your radios, portable radios, uh, all of that sort of stuff. Uh, that's sort of an ongoing cost that that's once again relatively stable. Uh, it's not like they're changing over to a new radio network in the near foreseeable future, that you're going to incur great costs. You just did that only a few years ago. And uh, and then finally, uh, your your fire rescue equipment actually will drop, simply because uh, uh, we'd be moving the personal protective equipment to to the capital budget as opposed to the operating budget. So. So uh, that budget, and I tell you what the price, the time was, uh, it's just slightly more than one million dollars. So that was the proposed operating budget. If you take a look at the right, the left screen, uh, I took a look at your revenues. Uh, I I'm willing to bet that uh, should the will be there to to renegotiate some of these revenues, excuse me, uh, the department should have no trouble uh, re- generating revenue, a revenue stream of about a hundred twenty-five thousand per year. And then I kind of played with uh, just the purchase of one engine for now, just simply to show you what it'd look like, that if you were to purchase one engine, uh, uh, your PP uh, capital budget expenditure would be forty-eight thousand, but uh, you'd have to put a lease down payment uh, at that point for one engine, it'd be a fifteen percent, which would translate to about a hundred thousand. And then your annual lease payments for one engine, one pumper would be about seventy-five thousand, which would give your total operational costs for the year twenty twenty-three proposed at uh, just slightly more than one-point-one million dollars. And that's all I have for you on that part.
Hey, council, do you have any questions for Don? It's been quite uh, quite the budget that he's showed us and and uh, also going through the recommendations, I think there's some really good things out there. So let's uh, create some discussion and ask some questions.
We're just gonna check, make sure this is the last page. There it is. That was one of, not necessarily one of my success stories, uh, but uh, whatever. We we did pump lines, ball of water.
Uh, Colleen, do you have any comments?
Not really. The only thing that I wanted to mention is that the report will be coming forward uh, to a council meeting in the near future, probably not next week. I'm thinking beginning of October, year year uh, I don't know the date, October, for council's acceptance. I really want this council to take a look at it and to accept the report. And then we can utilize it in moving forward. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Yeah, I think uh, comments I made before, I I I understand that uh, um, that uh, the airport is is the is one of the jewels that we have in this municipality. And certainly made the comment that it's not very well protected based on times and the water available. But I think that uh, you know, a plan moving forward with bringing in new equipment and re- repurposing that equipment to the um, to the airport, you know, like uh, in the case of that tanker, that old older tanker, while it would be a secondary unit there. I I do agree with uh, with an all all-road or all-weather vehicle or all-condition vehicle as a primary, but certainly a secondary for hauling water. I think that that would be a, that would be a great asset. And certainly, we would lose on it by uh, selling it to somebody else. And and uh, so I think moving forward, that's that would be something that I would like to see.
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Uh, you know what? I I really appreciate um, um, Mr. Enz, your your report. Uh, I think it highlights a lot of things. I think it identifies that the the position we're in today is a very good position. Um, you know, you know, and uh, really just the looks forward to the um, uh, the the large equipment uh, replacement plans and trying to identify that stuff. You know, I I really like uh, Council point suggestion of uh, repurposing the equipment to towards the airport and the fact that you identified that it's a high, a higher risk within our municipality. I think that's a very good, a very good observation as well. The fact that we have uh, fantastic staff uh, to do with the the fire departments is just, it's nice to hear an outside voice uh, really uh, confirming that and and seeing what we see, as well as the fact of all the volunteer hours and the community engagement that's going on. So all all in all, I think your your report was very good. And I and I look forward to seeing uh, some of the enhanced recommendations you had talked about with the some of the numbers and the rest. Uh, and being able to uh, see it all in the in one format. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate both.
Don, I have a comment and and uh, okay?
Go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, thanks for the report, Don, and and thank you for confirming what we already knew, that we have a great firemen in our in our in our fire departments and um, dedicated to what they do, and we appreciate that. I'd like you to, could you send us your email address? I have a um, something I'll I'll send to you that is, would be for another revenue stream, but I'd like you to look at it first um, and give us your opinion on it, um, before we talk about it. And uh, but I'll send you the um, information on it, what was, what what I think would be a very good revenue stream in moving forward. So.
Absolutely. Well, Colleen has my uh, my email address, and I'm absolutely for sharing that uh, or my cell number. No problem.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Thank you, Don.
Comments?
Oh, thank you, Don. That was a very good report. Some parts, bit under yourself, but now I've read it again twice. It's a very excellent report. Thank you. And I look forward to the whole, the full report when it's done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Any further comments? Uh, Council Pritchen?
No, thanks for the report. I appreciate it. And uh, um, you know, this this uh, councils, you know, always worked hard with the fire stuff. And prior to um, you know, having the district fire chief position, Kristen and I dealt with that for a year and a half. And uh, you know, I I think you know what's all entailed in there. And you know, lots of fun, right? Back and forth, back and forth. And I don't admire administration dealing with the budgets and that. It's it's a huge job. It's a huge undertaking. And uh, but there's always ways to improve it and tighten things up. So I appreciate having, like Daryl said, an outside opinion. Another set of eyes uh, with your expertise is a huge benefit to us. So thank you for that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Holby?
Yeah, thank you so much. It was a great report. There was lots of stuff that made me go, hmm, and lots of stuff that uh, was very detailed. And um, you know, the the information about the airport and our staff and, you know, having that that lead head. And then I looked at the numbers, you know, it is exactly seventy-five with that main district fire chief. So uh, just really, you know, it was it confirmed a lot of things I already thought, and it also gave me some idea of, you know, where where we need to look moving forward. So I appreciate that. It was a great report. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Russ?
Oh, I don't really have any questions. It was pretty thorough. I uh, I very much appreciated the report. It was nice to kind of have all that information, like kind of synthesized in one area for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, certainly, Don, uh, us as uh, non-firefighting people, certainly, we we needed this um, information. So moving forward, we can make better decisions for our fire department. And I really appreciate uh, what uh, what you've brought forward. And it'll help us make uh, you know, better decisions and also look forward to the rest of your report. Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments? I don't see any. So.
If you don't mind. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, just so you know, uh, in terms of uh, of transparency, uh, when I put together this PowerPoint presentation, uh, I I spent some time confering with DJ on this. And uh, uh, this presentation was also made to the fire chiefs because it gave me a chance to do a dry run before I came from council. So so I just wanted to make sure you were made aware of that. So.
In the bind.
Well, that's good to hear that you did that.
And and Colleen, thank you very much, Colleen, because yeah, I kind of missed the most important thing. We did, I did solicit the buy-in from uh, from the fire chiefs and their deputies. They're they're quite pleased with the report too. So.
Okay, excellent. Okay, if I have any, anybody has any more uh, last comments? I I have one last comment.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, please, Daryl.
You know, you know what? Uh, Don, thank you very much for identifying that you you actually went to the uh, fire halls and got some buy-in and and worked with the teams ahead of time prior to bringing it to council. Because uh, to me, there, there's a lot more of that that needs to be done in the future with a lot of a variety of different things, because the the more buy-in you can get, the more uh, the the more, I guess cohesive uh, team building you can get out of all of that, and that the results end up being better. So I I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not hearing anybody. So uh, Don, I'd like to thank you for bringing that report forward. We look forward to the final report. Given given us great information, as I said, and uh, thank you very much for for doing this for us.
Thank you.
Okay, we've come to the end of our agenda. That was, that was the only item that we were going to discuss tonight. So with that, I will read the motion to adjourn. Uh, motion to adjourn meeting at six forty-seven PM. Can I have a mover, please?
Counselor Paul adjourns.
Counselor Paul moves, seconder.
Second.
Counselor Garvey seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That is carried. Thank you very much, everybody, for uh, for listening to a great report, and I hope we can uh, we can uh, get the final report and move it forward. With that, I bid you all a good evening and have a great rest of your day. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night, all.
Good night.